The Hammond City Council will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being in its essence.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying, Lord, thank you for another day. We ask that you guide us in direct so that we can do what's necessary to make our city a better place for all the great residents of this great city. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Clerk Golick roll call. Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kawinski.
Here.
Salinas. Hicks.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three, reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion to accept the minutes in the August 27, 2012 meeting.
Second. There's a motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Kawinski to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Number four, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, August 22 through September 5, 2012, for council meeting, September 10, 2012, beginning with claims dated 8/2812 and ending with claims dated 9/512. Claims number 3948 through claim number 44141, for a total of $3,521,906.48, I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spatelli, to prove the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the claims, 8/22 to 9/5? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote. Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kawinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Approval of claims passes, eight, zero, one absent. Number five. Public hearing is now open for discussion. Public hearing is now open.
Item A, the 2013 Hammond Civil City Budget, ordinance 12-44. Item B, the 2013 Hammond Sanitary District Budget, ordinance number 12-45. Item C, the 2013 Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal, ordinance 12-46.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Anyone like to speak in public hearings now open? Public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Just want to acknowledge, this came from Secrets Loving Daycare for Elderly Care in Munster, and one of my residents at 9/18, Ms. Betty Lockett, celebrated today her 103rd birthday, so I just wanted to send a shout out and just say happy birthday to Ms. Lockett. For 103 years, God has blessed her to live, and it was a great occasion that took place today, and a number of the state reps and a number of her family members were there to celebrate with her, so again, I just wanted to say happy birthday to Ms. Betty Lockett on her 103rd birthday today.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Hearing none, seeing none, communications is now closed. Number seven, committee reports.
President.
Councilman Spatelli. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed.
Committee reports.
Number eight, ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance 12-43 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating a new non-reverting fund, fund number 018, entitled the Prisoner Escrow Fund.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Third, most, third, final rating, and also this is to create a new accounting fund for people that are arrested, with pocket money, will go up to this and then get released and then have it back to them. Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Councilman Spatelli, I didn't hear you clear because you went speaking into the mic. Could you speak into the mic again so I can hear clearly what you were saying?
Councilman, you want to know what it was about? It was to create a new accounting fund for those people that are arrested, with the money that they have in their pockets, to be returned back to them as they, when they leave.
Any other discussion on 12-43? Any other discussion on 12-43? Clerk Golick roll call vote on 12-43. Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kawinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 12-43 passes, eight, zero, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, introduction of ordinances, number 1244, the 2013 Hammond Civil City Budget Proposal.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kawinski.
I move that 12-44 pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole with a public hearing, well, public hearings today. Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Kawinski, second by Councilman Spatelli, first and second reading on 12-44. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item B, ordinance 12-45, the 2013 Hammond Sanitary District Budget Proposal.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kawinski.
I move that 12-45 pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole.
It's been motion by Councilman Kawinski, second by, excuse me, Councilman Spatelli. With 12-45, council as a whole, first and second reading, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C, ordinance 12-46, the 2013 Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kawinski.
I move that 12-46 pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole. Second.
Motion by Councilman Kawinski, second by Councilman Spatelli. Move, first and second reading on 12-46, council as a whole, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
To avoid our future issues as it relates to those three particular items on the agenda, still supposed to be discussion, you didn't say to any discussion.
Let's open it for discussion. Is there any discussion?
I guess my question would be, as it relates to the sanitary district budget, are there any increases, and I know I seen Mr. Alan Gredy out there in the audience, or he was in the caucus, did he leave? Were there any increases as it relates to the sanitary district budget? Is Mr. Alan Gredy here? Okay, that's sufficient, if she could step to the podium and maybe enlighten me on any changes in their proposed budget.
Good evening, Mr. President. In the sewer maintenance budget, we actually decreased the budget of $90,062. We also have our debt service, but that's mandated by the DLGF, so.
If you could speak into the mic, please, I can't hear you.
Yes, sorry. Sewer maintenance budget was increased 90,062.
Sewer maintenance, you said?
Yes.
Is there any proposed increases for the, for the employees for 2013?
Will follow the city, 1%.
Any new positions put in this budget?
No.
That's all the questions I have for now.
Any other discussion? Let's move on to D, Clerk Golick.
Item D, ordinance 12-47, the 2013 Hammond Public Library Budget Proposal.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
From my understanding, this is the first year we've ever been presented with the library board's budget, so I guess, I'm sure you guys have questions, because I have a few myself, and has it, you know, the.
Point of order, Sir Chairman.
Point of order is first and second reading, Councilman Hicks. We haven't had a first and second, Councilman Hicks.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Henoza, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
As I stated previously, I guess my question would be, is this, this is the first time this body has ever had to approve the library's budget, so I guess I need to know, what are the increases? Are there any new positions that are included in this budget? Is it someone from the library, or their attorney can speak, speak to these issues? Thank you so much. What's your name?
My name's Cornell White, I'm the financial analyst at the Hammond Public Library.
My first question was, are there increases included in this budget?
There is increases. The general fund went from 2.8 million to 3.6 million.
I have a question, out of the 2.8 million is for 2012?
Yeah.
Are you going to be in the hole for this year, for 2012?
No, we're not.
You're going to have a balanced budget with 2.8 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Our budget in 2011 was 4.8, 4.08. We had a decrease, and we're trying to bring that back up to where we're functional again.
Trying to bring the budget back up so you can what?
So that we're, so that we're functional again. Our levy is frozen at 3.7 million. This is still underneath the levy, we're trying to utilize our levy.
I have a question for you. Can you give us, of course, this is just first and second reading, for the next meeting, can you give us, can you give us the numbers for, for 2012 as far as your budget, whatever, whatever those amounts were?
Those, the 2012 budget?
Right.
Yeah. It, you mean with our, maybe our 1782?
I don't know what they call it, but whatever, whatever the, whatever the amounts were for 2012, can you get us, get us those copies for next year?
Yes.
For, for next meeting?
Yeah, I have them right here.
You have them there?
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
I mean, it's not necessary, because this is just first and second reading, what he's saying to you is if you can get copies so that all, me and my colleagues would have them, so they're prepared for the next meeting before the budget is approved.
No problem.
Excuse me, I think you indicated to me that you wanted a public hearing on the 24th?
Yes.
That would have to be put in a form of a motion for it, in order for us to do that, somebody has to make a motion.
What was the question again?
Attorney Burge said that they, the library directors wanted a public hearing on the 24th of September, if I'm quoting him correctly, and so, in order for that to be done, someone has to make a motion so that it could be presented at that time.
I don't hear a motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
From what I'm understanding, the reality of it is, is that we got to approve their budget, whether we increase it or whatever, but the reality, it reverted back to last year budget or not, but the reality of it is, is that this body has to make a decision as to the library's budget at this point, because the state is mandating that the council approve their budget. So in saying that, I mean, I ain't hear nobody say they making a motion for a public hearing yet.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Under that first and second reading, I'd like to add a public hearing for the 24th, is that our next meeting?
Yes.
Add a public hearing for the 24th? And I have a question, I'm trying, I'm looking at these numbers, trying to understand.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
There's a motion on the floor, is there, should be a second.
Should be a second, correct. There's a motion by Councilman Henoza to add a public hearing on 10/24 in regards to...
Mr. President.
Ordinance 12-47, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion on the public hearing?
Mr. President, that should be 9/24, 9/24.
9/24.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
You said your levy is frozen at what, 3.7? So how did that affect the operation of the libraries in 2012?
It's, it, our levy, I mean, our budget is at 2.8, so as far as our levy being, being frozen at 2, 3.7, I, I mean, it hasn't affected it yet. The problem is, is that we need repairs and computer upgrades, so we're, we were like three years not upgrading any of our equipment. We're trying to utilize as much of our, of our levy with our budget as we can in 2013.
Do you have an idea of what the revenue you actually get in terms of return books and all that?
Yes. It's within that, it's in, it's in Form 2, it has all of our miscellaneous revenue.
What page is that?
It's five pages in through the budget. So first you have the estimated budget, the rainy day fund, or the, the general, you have the estimated budget, then you get to estimation of miscellaneous revenue, which it says in the, in the right hand, upper hand.
What's the page number, at the bottom of the page?
Oh, 15.
So donations, gifts, and that's 93,000?
That's, that's, that's the rainy day fund, go to page, I'm sorry, I skipped one, it's on page 13, the general fund.
You said it's in miscellaneous?
Yes, page 13, general fund.
I'm on page 13.
And those are all of our miscellaneous revenue.
So in 2012, miscellaneous was 12373?
Yes.
And you're projecting for 2013, 24775?
Yes.
I got, I got a question for you. This is the first time that this comes up in front of the council? Do you have your own budget, I mean, your own budget that you have to pass within your library board to, to be legal? Or has that been changed now, where we have to pass it for your budget to be legal now?
It's, it's up to you guys, it's up to you now. Normally, this would go in front of the library board, as of Jan, of July 2012, they've changed the law, and now we have to go before you for any type of budget increases or additional appropriations.
Okay, let me ask you a question, you said the levy's been frozen at 3.7, 3.7 million, how come you're at 2.8 for 2012?
They, we, circuit breaker cuts, and we did an additional appropriation at the end of 2013 for 4,000, $400,000, and it decreased the, the budget for 2012.
All right, let me ask you another question, you gave us a figure of 4.0, 4.0 million, what amount does that run?
That's our 1782 from 2013, I mean, 2011, was our, that, that was our general, that was our general, our general fund budget for 2011.
Okay, so if, if in 20, if in 2011 you were 4.0 million, you didn't, you wound up, you wound up being in the hole in 2011, and in 2012, you wind up in the hole for 2012, and you had to make all kind of cuts?
In 2011, we had a $800,000 circuit breaker.
So if the levy is frozen at 3.7 million dollars, is that what this budget is, 3.7 million dollars, or it's more than that?
It's 3.6, 3.6.
Where's the money coming from between 2.8 and 3.6?
Could you repeat that, I'm not.
Councilman Spatelli, address the podium.
Can I speak, please?
Go ahead.
2.8, correct?
Yes.
Up to 3.6, where's, where's the money coming from for the difference?
Our circuit breaker in 2011 was, was 800,000, the circuit breaker for this year was 400,000. We have extra. My boss wants to speak, the director of the library.
Address your name, please.
Mr. President, my name is Renee Greenleaf, I'm the director of the Hammond Public Library.
Okay.
In reference to the, answer to your question of the difference between the two.
You speak into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. In reference to your question of the difference of the 2.8, the circuit breaker that we received for 2012 was 400, was $400,000. We had a LRF fund that we had not used, we declared it dormant, the board passed it, and that brought back the circuit breaker of another 400,000. So there was the 800,000, 2.8 plus the 800 brought us back to where we needed to be in terms of being able to use the, utilize the resources in our library.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
So prior to you doing that, using that dormant fund, you were not able to use all the operations of the library, is that what you're saying?
We had all of the operating funds of the library, but our budgets were severely cut by the circuit breaker. We lost last year, one, in that year, we lost 1.2 million dollars out of our, out of our budget.
Out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund.
Got to be precise and speak to the issues, because, again, this is new, you know, the budget process is one thing, but they need to know so they're clearly understanding. Now how many, Mr. President, if I can.
Councilman Hicks.
How many libraries were closed in this fiscal year?
In, at the end of 2011, in November, we had to close two of the library branches in order to sustain the cuts and the reductions that we encountered as a result of the frozen levy, as well as the circuit breaker cuts. It severely hurt.
And those branches were the EB Hayward?
EB Hayward.
And what was the other branch?
And the Howard branch.
So in, in saying that, how much money you estimate saving by closing those two branches?
It is our hope that we will be able to sell one of those branches, but in closing those branches, we hope to recoup at least the $400,000 that, you know, we're still looking to have to cut out of the budget in order to sustain us. There are, as this is new to you, please be patient with us, this is also very new to us. What we are, this law passed in June, that our local council had to approve our budgets to go forth to, onto the next phase. Our board generally approves our budgets every year, and then we submit those budgets with what we need to the DLGF. This year, June 30th, the GLGF demanded that all public library entities that did not have appointed staff persons go before their local councils to have their budgets approved. We were in a non-binding.
Wait a minute, I don't mean to cut you off, but you say appointed person, you know, we have people on the county level that are appointed to the library.
I'm sorry, elected.
Okay, you got to be clear now.
I'm sorry, elected, and forgive me, again, this is as new to us as it is, you know, to, to the council respectfully, but our, since our board members are not elected, they are appointed, it has to come to our local council for their approval.
So had, for instance, had the library board been elected, there would be no need to come to the council, but since everyone is appointed, now you have to go, each individual city has to go before their council, is that what you're saying?
Well, we have to go before our council.
What about Gary in East Chicago?
Gary in East Chicago, contingent upon the, who maintains the assessed value of their library, have to go before. Gary in East Chicago contingent upon the, um, who maintains the assessed value of their library have to go before their local councils to have it approved. So some have to go before their city councils, others have to go before the county councils. Yes, this is very new and, and confusing to some extent.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
So, so you understand, uh, reason you're up there is because this is all new to us. Before I ask a question to my, to our city controller, to, uh, City Hammond, uh, you know, you're, well, you, you told us that your froze, that the levy is froze for the library at three point seven million? And that three point seven million is not going to increase anymore until, what?
We have.
Until there's a county income tax. Is that correct?
Correct.
You know about that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and the same thing with the City Hammond, so everybody understands that, uh, we're frozen at twenty-six million dollar, I mean, twenty-six million dollars, uh, roughly. And we're not going to get an increase, uh, year after year, uh, because our levy is frozen also. We're using approximately fourteen, fifteen million dollars of our casino money that we usually use for streets and alleys, um, for construction. We can't do that anymore. We have to use it towards, towards the budget. So I'm looking at your three point seven million dollars. Ours and also yours would increase three percent every year. Your three point seven million would increase three, uh, three percent every year, but we don't have a county income tax. Because we're have, we don't have a county income tax, we're all being punished, and we're going to be frozen at those levels until we get a county income tax. I'm not saying I'm for a county income tax or against it, but that's something that, uh, that has to be looked at, at, at a county level also. Until we have a county income tax, we're never going to see any increases. And meanwhile, uh, I'm sure you have things that you have to repair. We have things that we have to repair, and we have, uh, crime that we have to take care of. We have police and firemen that, uh, that need their, need their salaries, but we don't have it anymore. I just want to make you aware, and I'm sure you probably knew, I want to make sure that your levy's frozen just like ours, and it's not going to increase. Now, my, my question to the city controller is, any of this budget right here going to decrease our budget? Are we going to have to pay for anything, anything out of this three point seven million dollars? Mr. Controller.
Mr. President.
You could address, uh, Controller Bobby Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I've had an opportunity to review the submission of the library budget, and, uh, I do have some significant and some serious concerns. And after hearing the testimony of Mr. White, I have further concerns. Mr. White testified that this budget doesn't have to go before the library board. First of all, it's concerning to me. He said you guys are the, the body that passes it. And I'm not an attorney, but from my interpretation of the statute, this absolutely has to go before the library board. Secondly, the documentation that he submitted does not appear to have gone before the library board. However, he's submitting it showing that these amounts have been adopted by the library board. In each of these columns, it shows that these amounts have been adopted. It's very concerning to me. Secondly, uh, if you'll flip to page nineteen. Mr. White testified to you that his levy was frozen at three point seven million, and he has a budget of three point six. Page nineteen indicates that the total budget for the library, however, is four point eight million, which is significantly higher than what Mr. White testified it was going to be, and also significantly higher than their levy. Lastly, in researching the City of Hammond library's budget for two thousand twelve, I found they had a tax rate of approximately twenty-two cents and some change. Okay? The tax rate is based on every hundred dollars of assessable property. So in two thousand twelve, their tax rate is twenty-two cents. The tax rate they're asking for in two thousand thirteen is twenty-nine cents. Okay? So there is an increase from twenty-two cents to twenty-nine cents. They're asking for seven additional cents. Knowing that our levies are frozen, if seven cents more of a frozen levy and a frozen cap is paid to the library, it's only simple math that tells you that seven cents has to come from another taxing entity, and that taxing entity will be us if, and so we approve this budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
That, that was my concern. And looking at page twenty-one, if, if, if you can revert the library, uh, financial analyst and director. Page twenty-one, it says, uh, Paul Taylor, Lucille Cotta, Koka, Alan Zarek, Rosemary Kaplan, Louis Carubis, Hester Cannon, and Abbotine Dent. There's no signatures as it reflects that they approved, and it's got a date of ten thirty, two thousand twelve. So you're saying we need to approve it, then it goes back to them? I thought the library board would approve it, and then it'd be presented to us.
For it to be adopted, our adoption date is at the end of, uh, October. These amounts aren't adopted yet. For me to print it out on the computer, I had to just adopt them for the computer's sake. We aren't testifying for our levy. We are talking about the budget. So if our levy is frozen at three point seven, that's what we're going to get. From what he's, from the, from what the city controller was saying, all I want to do is utilize the projected, um, the projected revenues that I see that is, that, that, that we, we should be able to use in two thousand thirteen. And then absolutely no form or fashion do we want any more tax revenue. This is just to be able to utilize the money that the library will be, will, will, will have, will, will.
You're projecting.
Well, from what I have, or what we will have left over this year, if we sell the properties, we'll have extra revenue. I think, I believe.
I only know one property that people are looking at, because I've gotten phone calls about it. I can't speak on the other one, but anyway, go ahead.
I, I mean, the bottom line is, is if we sell them with a two point eight million dollar, um, budget, we will not be able to spend those, that, that property. I came here to speak about the, also to add to this, I'm speaking on the, the general fund. Yes, the total amount of the levy, when you add in both the general fund, the rainy, well, the rainy day fund is not taxable, and the, the lease rental. I am not speaking on the lease rental. I'm speaking only on the general fund, only on our operations, or operational budget. And that's, that, those.
So when you say that, okay, your operational budget for twenty, for this year, what was your operational budget for this year?
Two point eight million.
And you're requesting for an operation budget for two thousand thirteen of what?
Two, uh, three point six million, like what I've been saying.
Where are you going to get the money from? That's my question. I'm just hypothetically speaking, not to be blunt or anything, but I'm just wondering where is this extra revenue going to come from? I know you said you have properties that you may sell or may not sell. How do you plan to reach this anticipated amount of money?
With, with our levies that we got this, just this year, our, our, um, circuit breaker is only four hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand, the dollars minus three point seven is three point three. If we, plus the properties, that equals close to three point six. We are not asking for any additional funds from anyone else, just to use our own.
Resources within your budget. You better make that clear to these, because they, hey, trust me, if I didn't ask questions, I would be lost too. But I mean, you better make, you better, because they, hey, I'm telling you, money is tight, and any indication that something is coming from this, this body, it ain't going to happen. I'm just going to be straight up and tell you. So you need to be clear, be precise, have your facts, figures, days, numbers, everything intact.
Mr. President.
This, this budget, I'm sorry, um, this budget is not adopted yet. The adoption date is on page.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
You got ten thirty, two thousand twelve on there.
October thirtieth.
Correct. So you, so, at what point does you, the board, because I'm thinking, okay, if you present a budget to your board, they approve it, then you come to the council for final approval. I thought that's the way it should be.
Right, it's finally, once it's adopt, once it's adopted, we have our cover thirty, thirty-first, the, we file the budget with the, with the auditor, county auditor. On the thirtieth, the board meeting is to, is, the board meeting is at Maine. And, um, the board meeting and public hearing is on the thirteenth, I mean, uh, is on the twenty-fifth of, which has just passed. But we have not adopted this budget yet. We need your approval, then it'll be filed with the county, and then we can approve it with the, with our library board. But like, like I repeat again, this.
Again, excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off, but you're saying we need to approve it, then you go to them to approve it? To the board?
To adopt.
To adopt what we approved.
Exactly.
Mr. President. Councilman Spitali. That controller, Bobby Lindy, come to the mic, please.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, I still have significant concerns about our council being misled. Mr. White just testified that he couldn't provide you with a budget with the adopted amounts blank. I'd like to render the budget that I just submitted to the council on the exact same budget forms from the state that Mr. White used. And as you can see, I rendered this budget to the council without the adopted amounts included. Secondly, Mr. White testified to you that he has to come before the city council, and libraries have to come before city councils to get their budgets passed, which is not true. As a matter of fact, Mr. White does not have to be here, does not have to be in front of you, does not need your blessing to pass his budget. The reason he is here is because his two thousand thirteen proposal has exceeded the state growth potions. Okay, which is a percentage increase, Councilman Hicks, I know, I see you looking. It's a percentage increase that the state has set as a benchmark. And as long as the library is under that percentage increase, they can just pass their budget through their board. But because he's over it, and so significantly over it, is the reason he's here. Now, Councilman Hicks, you just questioned Mr. White. You asked him if he is going to increase his budget with additional tax revenues or with money he already has. And he answered it's going to be with the money that we already have. Well, I submit to you that their tax rate in two thousand twelve is twenty-two cents. Okay? If his testimony was correct, the tax rate for two thousand thirteen should also be twenty-two cents. However, it's not. It's twenty-nine cents, Councilman Hicks.
But it would only be twenty-two cents if he reverted back to his previous year?
No, it'd be twenty-two cents if he requested a twenty-two cent levy from the taxpayers and then funded his budget further with the existing revenue he has or was going to generate from the sale of properties. But that's not correct. He's asking for a twenty-nine cent levy in two thousand thirteen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Does the, uh, Bobby, does the twenty-nine percent equal four point eight million?
The twenty-nine cents, that tax rate would be sufficient to fund the budget that he has submitted. That's correct.
Four point eight million?
Correct.
Okay, and, and just so the library board knows, uh, myself, and I'm, and I'm sure including everybody up here, everybody hated to see the libraries closed. One, one in my own, my own district, uh, uh, the Howard branch, everybody's hated for it to go, and we wish we can bring it back. Is any of this going to bring the branches back? No?
Probably not.
Respectfully, sirs, and madam, the, the budget that we are requesting includes the, um, lease rental that, the lease rental budget that the library has for the renovations of the library building that exists over at Maine. There is a bond issuance that was approved for that building. So the budget that, um, the controller is speaking to includes the total budget, which would be the lease rental as well as the operating fund. Unfortunately, because of the way in which things are, are working currently, we cannot bring those, um, budgets back. Bring those libraries, I'm sorry, back. It's impossible for us to do that. But.
Why, why is it?
Because we do not have the monies to facilitate the operations of those libraries. We can't bring those branches back. There's no way we can bring those branches back. If we, if this, if our budget, um, drops back to the two point eight million, there's nothing left for us to be able to cut. There is additionally that bond issuance that is out that belongs to the City of Hammond. So whether the Hammond Public Library continues, or whether the Hammond Public Library stays, um, closes, that bond issuance still has to be paid. So what we are asking for, just in the operation of the budget, is that we be able to go to that max levy, that we be able to get the, um, three point six to facilitate the library so that that library can, can remain in operation and we can serve the public. We do understand, and this is our very first time having to come before the board, correct? Our budget has increased.
Not to cut you off, but my understanding of what Bobby just said, our city controller is saying that had you not went over that maximum amount, you wouldn't be here. But since you did, now we have to approve it. Is that what the state law says?
That's what the state law says, that we, that you all have to, you're not approving the budget. You, we, we are under.
We are approving it.
We're, we're under a binding agreement, yes. We're under a binding agreement now because that budget has increased. The reason that it had to increase was so that we could maintain operations of those libraries because we have the lease rental budget, and we also have the operations budget. That lease rental has to be paid by Hammond, period. So in order for us to be able to operate Maine Library, you know, no frills, we need to have the budget to be able to do that. We have cut staff, we have cut back in just about everything that, that we can.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I, I believe our, our city attorney is here, so I, I, I think we have to, uh, well, we have, we have to do some research on, uh, the three point, is it three point seven million? Or is it four point eight million? Because the difference, if you subtract, uh, four point eight minus three point seven, it's, uh, one point one million dollars more that it's going to cost. So who's going to have to pay this cost? That's what we need to know from our city attorney to find out by, by next, by next meeting.
The, the residual is the lease rental.
What's that again?
The, that, that extra that you're saying between, that, that's the lease rental fund. Um, that's the lease rental, um, expense. That's the bond. And also I had to, to go with, the reason why we have to go before you, we have no growth potion. So any dollar, one dollar, we would have to go in front of you. What he, what the, uh, city, the city controller said was true, but there, i- i- any shifting in the money from one fund to another, we would have to go before you because that would be an additional appropriation. We have no growth potion, obviously, because there's no, we were, we're at a zero in Lake County. So at any amount, we would have to go before you. Like, like I.
Verbatim, not to cut you off, but I guess, Virgil, we need, uh, the state law as it reads, me and my colleagues need to know exactly what the state law says as it re, re, um, refers to the library itself. We need to know what the language says in terms of how it's, applies to us as a body.
I have the state laws here.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowalski.
Can we get, uh, Controller Lindy back up? Can you please continue to shed some light on this?
If, if I can make this analogy, maybe, maybe I can. If all of the total tax revenue under the cap equaled a hundred dollars, okay? And the City of Hammond and the library were the only two overlapping taxing entities, okay? And the way we split that was the library got five dollars, and the City of Hammond gets ninety-five dollars. Now, we have a frozen levy, and we have a cap, and that's why we're only getting a hundred dollars. We get ninety-five, they get five. If they asked for six, where is it going to come from? The only place it can come from, and that's the total tax revenue. So if we give the blessing to let them get six dollars, it means that our part of the total tax revenue then is 94 instead of 95. And that's obviously oversimplified, but that's the gist of, of why they have to come before us to ask. Is because for, for them, to increase the amount of levy and property taxes they receive, it's gotta come from somewhere. Our property taxes are fixed at that set amount. So if they're getting more from a set amount, somebody is getting less. Because we know our property taxpayers aren't paying more, right? We're all at the cap.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs. So what you're saying, Bobby, if there's a shortfall, we are responsible for that shortfall, for the library?
We're gonna gap it. That's what we would be approving. It's not really a shortfall, Councilman. We're going to be supplementing their budget with our tax revenues. And that's as, as simple as I can put it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I would like to, um, reiterate that at, right now, we have a 2.8 million dollar budget. We have a 3.7 million dollar levy. Right now, we have a, we, we have a 1.2 million dollars that's not being accounted for in our budget. At no point am I asking for any more money. All I'm asking for is to utilize the, the levy that we currently have. That's it. Nobody else's money, no other taxes. Right now, we have, by the end of this year, we will have, we will have funds that we will not be able to u- to use with what we've got in tax revenue just for this year. That money's gonna fall over into next year, and we will not be able to use it because we're taking your taxes? No. We have our own levy that five, five dollars and 44 cents is ours. We need to be able to utilize it. The citizens of Hammond are paying for that, and we're not able to use it. We do not want any more, any more, any more tax revenue. All right, now, he's saying that we, we raised our, 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 um, levy. We cannot. But still, you have 1.2 million dollars that's not accounted for from what the levy is right now. So what are we gonna do? Just shrink? The, because if we don't use it, it disappears. And the library isn't able to fund any new computers, the component system's running on computers, the, 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 the entire, the entire computer flip, the, the entire place is run on computers. But yet, we can't use the money that we already have in the bank because Hammond's afraid that we're gonna take their money? No. We have our own levy that we cannot use. We have our own cash that we cannot use. That's all I'm here to state, period.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Well, that's what you better make clear, and you better get them documentation showing that that in fact is the case because any indication that this body has to come up with some money to fund the library, sorry to tell you, they, they, they are not for it.
I'm, 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 I understand that.
So you better have documentation and be well prepared for the next meeting so that they understand clearly where the money's coming from and how it's applied and where, every, every angle. That's what you gotta do.
Any other discussion?
Right now, there's a motion for the first and second also, uh, to add a public hearing. Clerk Golick, we're gonna have a roll call vote on it.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Passage seven, yes, one no, one absent.
Ordinance 12 dash 48 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. And ordinance, amended ordinance number is 4629, 4653, 4924, 4960, 7510, 7512, 7542, 8352, 8415, 8571, 8934, and 9055, also known as section 72.999 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to penalties for parking in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, Clerk Golick, what was the number of this ordinance?
12 dash 48.
Uh, it's... Should be A amended.
1248A.
No, you have to make the amendment.
Is what I was instructed because of the change that was made.
Right. That's what I was saying about the amendment. This gets introduced and then you amend A into this.
Next me, alrighty, so 1248.
Oh, no, 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 I, yeah, not right now, but we gotta be additional first.
So I guess I'm confused. Okay. Alrighty.
Okay, it's motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa, who's in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
President Opinkar, that concludes the ordinances for introductions.
Number 10 resolutions are non. Number 11, noon unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
With, uh, nine eleven just around the corner, I wanted to bring out that the September 11th memorial and museum presents a music video, Martyrs of Manhattan. And you can find this at Martyrs of Ma- Manhattan on YouTube. The video commemorating that experience and, uh, everyone's invited to look at that in memory of the event, which is tomorrow. Thank you.
Any other noon unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I, uh, would like to mention, because, uh, some, well, one constituent has talked to me about when we, uh, add a new stop sign in the city of Hammond, we oftentimes put a double stop sign up there. And so I would, I said I would mention it after conferring with a colleague. I don't know that it's necessary to write a letter on everything under the sun, but I will call, uh, the street department tomorrow and mention that there are still double stop signs, uh, and I know that I've heard it's 90 days, uh, they should be up. These have been up for, in some cases, a year, uh, 173rd and Madison, 176th Street and Harrison, which on the other side is 176th Court, and 177th and Birch. So I will do that, and hopefully it's just a matter of taking the signs down and putting them in so we can use them somewhere else. Thank you.
Any other noon unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes. For those who wish to do good in their community, I'd like to announce a couple of crime watch meetings. Uh, Thursday, September 13th, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College, 6:30 PM. On, uh, Wednesday, September, I think I have the wrong date for Whiting-Robertsdale. It's this Thursday, which is, uh, the 13th. I had it right, okay. Um, uh, the Irving Community Watch will meet on Wednesday, uh, September 19th at Irving School, 6:30 PM. And, uh, the Columbia Lafayette Crime Watch will meet, uh, at Lafayette School on Monday, September 17th, 7:00 PM. Uh, from the Crime Watch website, it says, "Those involved in neighborhood crime watch groups are residents and business owners who take ownership and great pride in our community by refusing to let the criminal element take advantage of us. This volunteer involvement keeps our streets safer, bringing a sense of pride and ownership to our great city of Hammond. And that is how change happens. One gesture, one person, one moment at a time. I look forward to seeing you."
Any other noon unfinished business? Noon unfinished business is not closed. Public expression. Our first speaker will be Lori Zolno.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I just want to remind you that the monthly meeting of the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission is this Wednesday, the 12th, at 6:00 PM at Munster Town Hall. As you may remember, last month, I sent letters to all of you encouraging you to attend the meeting, and unfortunately, that meeting was canceled with very little notice to anyone. We, uh, I have again walked my neighborhood and asked for support from our neighbors. We are hoping to fill that room. We would like to express the concerns to the commission and the Corps that the project is not finished. We still have a section of Hammond that is not only unprotected. We are still paying exorbitant, uh, prop- uh, taxes for flood insurance. And as always, I do encourage all of you to come, and, uh, we certainly welcome your attendance and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Second speaker, Jim Wolfe.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. At your last meeting, the council passed a resolution declaring September as Brain Aneurysm Awareness Month in the city. I've been in contact via personal email with Chris- Christine Brinkley, who is the executive director of the Brain Aneurysm Foundation in Hanover, Massachusetts. She has informed me that Hammond is indeed the first city in the United States to pass such a resolution on a municipal level. Since the video, the council meeting has went viral, and it's on everybody's Facebook page, including the foundation. I personally have received almost 60 inquiries from people across the United States that want to do the same in their own local communities, the fathers being from Fresno, California. I have received an email of thanks from Ms. Brinkley for the council, and will provide copies to anyone wanting them. I also wish to convey my personal thanks because I am married to a ten-year survivor. Be very, it's a very brief email. I'd like to read it for you, and I do have copies for everybody. The Brain Aneurysm Foundation is appreciative to the city of Hammond City Council for recognizing the seriousness associated with brain aneurysms by passing a resolution to mark September as Brain Aneurysm Awareness Month in the city of Hammond. We are very fortunate to have had the US Senate make the same declaration last year, but bringing it to the city and town levels is at least equally as important for this is a disease striking within our communities daily, and awareness is always made best from the ground up. Uh, particular thank you she mentions, my wife and I's name, I'll skip over that. Uh, and Councilwoman Janet Vines for their efforts made to make a difference in the fight against a disease that can bring a multitude of devastating, a multitude of devastation without warning. Thanks to the city council and the citizens of Hammond, Indiana, and its signed Christine Brinkley, Brinkley, Christine Buckley, Executive Director, Brain Aneurysm Foundation, Hanover, Massachusetts. And again, I want to thank you personally.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe.
And anybody needing a copy, I have all kinds of. Thank you.
Thank you. Third speaker, uh, John Zolno.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. My question deals with the board meeting this evening. We have four budget proposals out on the agenda. On each one except the library budget, it states that there will be a public hearing held on 10/22. That's on the agenda itself. Is that still taking place? I never heard that in the motion. All right, what day should it?
That was an air at 10:22.
Should it be 9/22 then, or, okay, so there will be a public...
The next council.
Okay. My next... No.
9/20, 9/24.
9/22, okay.
9/24.
9/24, okay. My next question is with the budgets, how can a citizen of Hammond take a look at these budgets before the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I believe there's supposed to be copy in the controller's office to look at. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not certain. I'm looking for your help, so.
I'm sure there should be available. There are documents...
Yes, there is, there is a copy in the controller's office.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Probably a dollar per page.
No, no, he just wants to look at.
Oh, okay, well, I'm sure he's gonna...
Not available online though at all.
That, I don't know. Mr. Controller's still here or did he leave?
Clerk Golick.
Yes, uh, last year I was able to get him online as soon as possible. I will try again this year, but you can also review a copy of it in the clerk's office at normal working hours. Uh, but last year, we were able to get the proposed budget online, and, um, when the council passed it, we also republished it in its final form. Uh, that's something we've been working on the last couple of years, so, um, American Lego, who does all of our, our ordinances and publishes them online for us, uh, we notify them and we try to get it as, as soon as possible. If we get a disk in the controller's office, it's not a hard thing to do. If we don't get a disk, then, then we can't get it up there as soon as we want.
So is there a chance it will be online, prayer to the 9/24 meeting?
I would say no.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all for all your help and all your hard work. I know it's not easy up here and, uh, but I, I would think, you know, we talk about transparency in government. I'm not seeing it. I can't look at a budget, a proposed budget. We looked at a library budget that was going up by over a million dollars, and I'm sure tonight was the first time you guys had seen it. Again, thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Kowinski. It may seem slight, but during public expression, really, there isn't a dialogue. If there are questions, they can be addressed afterwards. But during public expression, it really is their, just their expression. The reason I bring it up is that tonight, even though there aren't many people, when we have a full house and the president said that we're having dialogue with one and then not another, then we're going to run into difficulty, so we would just continue to flow with public expression and people can be sought out after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kowinski. Next speaker will be George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robert St. I'd like to echo John. Uh, the last speaker's, uh, concerns about the lack of transparency. I don't see anything discussed at this council, uh, in public. Everything, the deal's already been done, cut even before we get into the caucus, it seems to me. Uh, it's definitely no critical discussion informing, informative of the, uh, or for the citizenry. But that's here and there. It's where you guys are elected to do your thing. It's our fault for keep, elect, to keep electing you. So that's watering the bridge. What I was concerned about was the library. Uh, you know, the internet is no longer a free highway. More and more, you're being charged to access, heck, even the Post Tribune, believe it or not, has the nerve to charge to read that newspaper. There's hardly any news in there. I mean, uh, it's getting better, but it's certainly not worth the money that they're asking you pay. I think it's in excess of seven dollars, almost eight dollars a month for the Post. I mean, that's, that's a little rich, if you ask me. But, uh, increasingly, you're finding this with all other search engines too. I suspect at some point in the more near than far future, we'll be charged for Google. Already now, you've gotta use Google Chrome, and the next step's just to start, uh, you, get, be putting you on a meter, uh, certainly for anything important. Thus, the library is that much more important. Uh, I thought the presentation by Mr. White was hideous. It was bad. I was just, I was going, spinning off back there just like the rest of you guys, where it was bad. I didn't understand. I think what he was trying to get at with respect to the 3.6 million in total revenues available is a distinction which he did not make between allocations at 2.8 and appropriations that he has to have in order to appropriate this money, that supplemental 600,000, whatever... that he has to have in order to appropriate this money, that supplemental 600,000, whatever assets he thinks, claims he can sell or has in a bank or whatever the case may be. Uh, and I thought it was 4.08 million with respect to the 1.2 extra million that he had, not, not 4.8. But again, I was just spun around just like you guys were, so I just thought I'd add that. I, I think that distinction again is between allocation and appropriation, so, we have-
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinozawa.
Um, I'd like to, uh, suspend the rules so we can have a second public hearing, uh, on the 24th, uh, on the budget. Um, just so everybody knows, I, I did talk to, uh, uh, our attorney, and I told him this is the first time that, uh, we're having, uh, budget hearings on budget, uh, budgets that we're just now introducing, first, put in first and second reading. So therefore, let me, let me repeat it. I'd like to suspend the rules so that we can have a second, if it's legal, a public hearing, uh, on the 24th of, uh, September on 12 dash 44, 12 dash 45, and 12 dash 46. I still move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hinozawa to suspend the rules, uh, second by Councilman Higgs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinozawa.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, go back to, um, 12 dash, 12 dash 44, 12 dash 45, 12 dash 46, and advertise for a second public hearing on September 24th, uh, 2012. I still move.
Okay, it's motion.
Mr. President.
Motion by Councilman Hinozawa, second by?
Second.
Councilman Markovich.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinozawa.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, is it legal, uh, well, was it right? First of all, was it right to have public hearings on something we haven't even introduced? Something so important like our city budget? I think it was wrong. Um, I'm glad you woke us up. I, I did, I was half awake, and that's why I talked to the city attorney about it. So, my, my question to the city attorney is, I mean, to our attorney, um, Mr. Berger, is have we ever done this before, and can we advertise, uh, to have a second public hearing on the 24th?
Councilor Berger.
I don't see any reason why we can't have a second public hearing if that's what the
It's fine with me, make the motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinozawa.
I don't know if I made the motion yet, but I'd like to make a motion that for 12 44, 12 45, 12 46, um, that we, uh, add on a public hearing, an advertised public hearing, uh, on September next meeting, September 24th.
It's a motion by Councilman Hinozawa, do I have a second? Or a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing on all three issues will be set, 9/24, 12. 12 44, 12 45, and 12 46.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinozawa.
Okay, that, that'll be, we already have one for 12 47, so it'll be all four of them. Uh, motion to go back to the regular order of business.
Motion by Councilman Hinozawa, second by Councilman Spatelli, go back to regular order of business, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hinozawa, second by Councilman Spatelli, all those in favor to adjourn? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.